Thank you. All right. Good evening, everyone. Sorry, we are one minute late. Welcome to Tuesday, February 21st. This is not... Oh, yeah, it is. I will call the meeting to order and have our city clerk do our roll call.
Mayor Kayla Clark.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Amy Lamb.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Howe.
Here.
Councilmember Kentine.
There.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Otuja Indapure.
Yep.
Councilmember O'Farrell.
Here.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Deputy Mayor Lamb, can you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? All right, thank you. Councilmember O'Farrell, do you mind doing the land acknowledgement?
Not at all. We acknowledge that we are on the indigenous land of the Coast Salish peoples, who have reserved treaty rights to this land, specifically the Kwame Indian Tribe. We thank these caretakers for this land, who have lived and continue to live here since time immemorial.
Perfect, thank you. So before we approve the agenda, I would like to ask for changes made. Councilmember Stewart?
Yes, I move that we amend the agenda to remove the first executive session and to remove item number 10.
Second. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Now can I just approve the agenda as amended, or do we need to vote on that part? Sorry, I already messed up.
No worries, just ask for a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Great, I will do that. Councilmember Stewart?
I move that we approve the agenda as amended.
Second. All right, that was Councilmember Howe that seconded that. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Aye, opposed? All right. The agenda is approved as amended. Thank you for your help. First up, we do have public comment, so we'll start in the room if we have any. I think we have Paul and James. I'm not sure which one signed up first. All right, Paul's up. Okay.
There we go. Good evening, city council members. To Paul Stickney, Samamish. I'm going to talk a little bit about the two emails I sent last evening and just summarize them a tiny bit. I strongly suggest that the community work into the comp plan as a core principle, staying for life, which is for all those that live and work in Samamish and have been here for a long time, what are opportunities for housing supplies to meet those within our community? Second part to staying for life is to quantify local needs, not to meet them all, but to know what the measurable numbers are, and then come up with optimal housing balance for our community. To that end, I suggested on your work plan a few word changes in only a couple things, in the housing goal and in one of the objectives. And the main thing to request there was to work quantified numbers into decision-making for all economic, demographic, and workforce housing needs in Samamish. Our comp plan and most of our fundamental documents have quantified well our two regional responsibilities. We have a 2,100 target, that's quantified, a growth target, and the county is handing down measurable numbers in different AMI categories that are quantified. Those are two regional approaches to numbers that are quantified. What's missing in our planning is what are the numbers of housing wants and needs needed for roughly 1/7th of the households in our community, about 3,200 households that make less than 80%? And internally, roughly 6/7ths of our households, or over 19,000 households, make over 100%? Then there is, you know, demographic change over life and workforce change over life. So I suggest that we get that data, compare consequences of meeting some of those needs, and this would be meeting needs for retention, not for attraction, allowing people to stay over time. And I'd strongly suggest that you take a look at the seven principles of the optimizing approach, which is in essence, to not have quite as many houses going forward that we have internal oversupplies of, quickly meet past and present shortages, plan for long-term housing sustainability, then plan economic services based on those three, then plan transportation based on those four, then manage the added wealth that comes from doing that work, and then maybe have to do road projects in the future and maybe not. Appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. James?
James Eastman, Eastlake, Samamish Parkway. Well, Mayor, I wasn't going to get up tonight, but since you called me up, here I am. No, I think she has a sheet by now, she sees my name on there, but... I looked through the agenda, and I must have saw the word "plan" on there at least over 100 times. And the irony is, my profession is, I mean, construction planning, scheduling, so I build 100,000 activity line item schedules for projects, and there's milestones along the way, there's all sorts of ways to measure progress, but they always achieve some sort of objective. I commented a little bit last week on the Climate Action Plan, making sure we have some objectives. But as you go back and you look at some of the plans the city has over the last 20 years, you look at the TMP, the TIPS, there's not much accomplishment as far as implementing the objectives of mainly those two documents. But there's also a really cool document called the Trails, Bike Ways, and Paths Plan from literally 2000s, where they formed a whole committee on, and just probably 1,000 hours of work must have gone into it, because it's an excellent document. But it kind of just fell by the wayside. So I would like to just, I guess, implore the council to make sure we have action coming out of these plans. And as I've always advocated, especially the last few months, is, you know, including me in the comp plan update gives you guys an actionable item that you can plan for two years from now, where we come out of the comp plan update and we can take action on the environmental goals, the DEIB goals, forest management, financial sustainability, which I want to talk a little bit more about. Objective 6.1, promote business development in the city, encourage more public and private partnerships. That's my goal, is to have my 100 acres included in this comp plan update. At the end, have a private-public partnership, which can help accomplish objective number two, which is identify ways to achieve financial sustainability, including leveraging external opportunities such as grant and enhance city resources. So the leveraging external opportunities would be a high property tax on some tech, if that's what appeals to the council, some tech jobs, hotel with a tax, and also ability to tax, special hotel tax on top of that, private bridge park/arboretum. You can bring people here from certain hours and tax that as well. So there's a lot of opportunity. I hope we can plan and have things result in action. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move to online.
If you wish to provide public comment, please raise your hand. For attendees joining by phone, please raise your hand by pressing star 9. You have three minutes to provide comment. So we have one commenter currently. I will now promote. Alan?
Yes. Hi. Let's try to start my video here. Here we go. Hi, my name's Alan Koffer, and I am not a resident of Samamish, but I am currently a resident of the Doothy Hill Notch, which, for those of you who are not familiar, is a 46-acre area in between High Country and Trossack's on that same side of Doothy Hill Road. Going back as far as at least 2008, a number of the residents of this enclave have been interested in being annexed into the city of Samamish and have, in fact, in the past, enjoyed the staunch support of the city for that endeavor. Just a small bit of history on the Doothy Hill Notch, or at least statistics. It's, as I said, 46 acres, 20 parcels, and currently zoned RA5, or one house per five acres. There are 20 parcels, four out of those 20 parcels are, in fact, five acres or greater, or in fact, the only conforming properties in that, in this area. Four are 1.6 to 3.7 acres, and 12 are less than, down to the smallest lot, which is approximately just over half an acre. To have this area remain zoned as rural is probably, at least in our minds, not appropriate, as it is, in fact, surrounded by the city of Samamish. And I don't know what the current car count was, but the last time we were informed of that was at least 7,000 cars a day going by on Doothy Hill Road, which kind of belies the rural designation for this area. We were very active in promoting this annexation and this process some years ago, and there has been some residents change, some life changes, some deaths, as a matter of fact, in the area. And we are interested in re-energizing this and kind of seeing what the possibility is. And thinking now in terms of, you know, additional space for the city of Samamish, knowing that the county and the state are mandating that there be a much stronger focus put on affordable housing, we find that this may be a unique opportunity for the city to acquire a new sort of an area that's actually kind of away from the more downtown sort of urban area, if you will, of Samamish, to have established an area that would be able to meet some of those needs.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I appreciate you listening.
Thank you.
Do we have any other commenters online? I do not see anyone else. Thank you, Mayor.
Great, thank you. Next, I will undertake a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
All right. All right, so it was moved by Deputy Mayor Lance, seconded by Otuja. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Aye, opposed? All right. And for those wondering, we have our city clerk taking our minutes, so I'm trying to capture motions and seconds. All right. For our proclamation, we have World Spay Day. I will read this one unless anyone else would like to. All right. "World Spay Day, February 28th, 2023. Whereas pets provide companionship to 65% of U.S. households, and whereas 2.4 million healthy and adoptable cats and dogs are put down in..." Oh, this is terrible. "...in animal shelters each year due to a lack of critical resources and public awareness, and nearly 90% of pets living in poverty and 98% of community feral and stray cats are unaltered. And spaying and neutering have been shown to dramatically reduce the number of animals who are put down in animal shelters, and programs exist to assist with the cost of spaying or neutering pets living in poverty and community cats." Cats? Oh. "And veterinarians, national and local animal protection organizations, and private citizens work together to advocate the spaying and neutering of pets and community cats through World Spay Day in the university..." Oh, my gosh. "...in the United States and throughout the world in 2023. Now therefore be proclaimed that February 28th, 2023, is designated World Spay Day. I, Mayor Kayla Clark, on behalf of the city council, am calling upon the people of Samamish to observe the day by having their own pet spayed or neutered, or by sponsoring the spaying or neutering of a pet in need." All right. So next with the presentation, I see that we were supposed to move this to unfinished business. Is it okay to keep that number nine in the presentation, the updates to the surface water development?
I think that's fine, Mayor. I think it's, they're looking for some actual direction, which is why we were suggesting to move it, but I think you can do that as part of presentations. Just know that it's unfinished business presentation.
Okay, unfinished presentation.
Turn it over to the Surface Water Team and interim Public Works Director Audrey Starsee.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you, city manager and mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Council. For the record, Audrey Starsee, interim Public Works Director. This evening, the Stormwater Division of Public Works will present an overview of our Surface Water System Development Charge, commonly referred to as SDCs. As described in our agenda bill, this is the final component of our 2022 stormwater rate study. So we are looking forward to providing you an overview this evening of our assessment of our SDCs. And with us to present is Tagi Aker and Amanda Levine, both from FCS Group, our consultants that have been supporting us through the stormwater rate study effort. I'll just give them a quick moment to join us and come on board and be promoted as panelists. And I can take a minute to introduce our Senior Surface Water Program Manager, Stephanie Sullivan, and myself will both be available for questions. So Tagi, whenever you are up and ready, we are ready for the presentations. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Let me share the screen here. Okay, does that come through okay? All right. Well, as Audrey mentioned, tonight we'll be talking about the system development charge specifically for the storm and surface water utility. So as a part of this presentation, we'll be providing some background information. We'll be touching on state law, what your current SDCs are. We'll go into what the updated calculation is, and then we'll incorporate that existing and updated charge into a regional SDC survey to see what other communities in the region are charging for stormwater SDCs. And then we'll end on what the updated SDC might look like in rate schedule form. So as a bit of background, SDCs are one-time charges, not to be confused with the annual stormwater rate, which represented late in 2022. Generally, they're calculated based on existing and future infrastructure costs, and as development occurs, they pay into the stormwater utility fund via the system development charges, and that revenue is a resource to offset the cost of capital projects, essentially recovering a proportionate share of the cost to serve growth. Properties that are already developed would not pay an SDC unless they do redevelop into a more intense use. So, you know, why now? You know, why update the SDC? Well, you know, a couple of reasons. We think it's an excellent time to update the SDC based on there's a new capital improvement plan. This is often referred to as the CIP. And so we've calculated what the updated SDC would be based on this new CIP associated with the adopted level of service, or LOS, for those annual rates that we were discussing earlier in this presentation. Now, they are separate items for discussion. The rates have already been adopted, and then this is following close on the heels of that annual rates discussion. In the future, generally, it is a good idea for SDCs to be updated from time to time. Typically, when there's an updated system plan, that's a great time to update the SDC to ensure that it's keeping pace with the adopted list of capital projects, general cost inflation that can occur over time, et cetera. In between SDC studies, a lot of communities will apply an annual inflationary adjustment based on construction cost inflation. So that, basing that on an annual index value can also help that charge stay more or less up-to-date in between a more thorough update. In terms of, you know, what's in the Revised Code of Washington, or the RCW, for cities and towns, there is a whole chapter associated with updating a connection charge. But we highlighted a few key items here in that brown color there. Key items are, you know, it's got to be an equitable share, so that as new customers connect to the stormwater utility, they pay a proportionate share of the cost of the stormwater system already in place and the planned stormwater projects in the future. Additionally, it can include up to 10 years of interest. So not only is it the cost of existing assets and the planned projects of the utility, but there is that opportunity cost in form of interest that you can add to that charge as well. So a little bit of background there that just wanted to touch on, in case anybody wants to do a little bit more research. So the city's existing SDCs are shown here currently. For a new residential dwelling unit, it's $2,085. And then for other developed, you know, commercial multifamily, it does scale up based on additional impervious coverage. And so it's about $209 per 250 square feet of impervious coverage. And these are assessed and collected at the time of permit issuance through the Development Services. So in terms of the general methodology for the system development charge, we take the actual costs of what you currently have in service, capital projects that you've already built. We add to that capital projects that are planned to be constructed in the future as a part of that system planning document that we talked about earlier. And then we divide that by estimated system capacity. So those are both the numerator and the denominator in the calculation of the SDC. So in terms of what the customer base is for the city of Samamish, we take your residential customers, and each developed single-family parcel is equal to one equivalent service unit, or ESU. And then we add to that all of your non-residential customers. And we take that impervious coverage and convert that to equivalent service units. And so you take 19,000 single-family ESUs, add to that just under 6,000 ESUs for non-residential customers, and your total denominator for the calculation is just under 25,000 ESUs. Because that data is a little bit dated, we do apply customer growth to get you to about 26,000 equivalent service units. And that's what we divide the costs by. So in terms of existing and future costs, we add together about $67 million in the existing cost basis, added to about $28 million in eligible future projects. And that's divided by, again, that 26,000 ESU number. So the updated calculation is just over $3,600 per equivalent service unit. That's compared to currently about $2,085. You can see there in terms of what is currently adopted. That's about a $1,600 increase. So there's the kind of the before and after there. 2,085 up to 3,654 for the updated system development charge. Now, this number, $3,654, represents the maximum defensible SDC at this time for the stormwater utility. Council per policy can adopt anything up to that amount. So there's no requirement that you update this larger SDC. The council could also phase into that over a number of years as well as options. And then here's that stormwater SDC. We looked at a number of cities in the region in terms of what they charge for system development charges. You can see the city's current charge there, kind of right in the middle of the pack there, about $2,100. The calculated update would be about $3,700. So that would be right at the top of that comparison list there. Do you want to note that cities of Bothell and Redmond, in addition to the citywide charges you see here for Redmond, for example, depending on the different sub-basin, can add anywhere from $6,000 to $11,000 on top of that. In Bothell, same type of structure. In addition to that citywide charge, the downtown sub-basin, CFC, Capital Facilities Charge, would add about $18,000. So in conclusion, this is the last plan slide that we had before questions and comments. The recommendation is to implement the calculated SDC of $3,654 per equivalent service unit, where one single-family residential developed parcel is one ESU, and then other developed property would be 3,500 impervious square feet for one ESU. And then in between studies and updates, we recommend that the city consider applying the Engineering News Record, or the ENR Construction Cost Index, and apply that annual inflationary adjustment. And that can help that charge, that can sort of keep up to date in between studies. Similar to what we saw in this update, the updated charge added about $1,600 in terms of what's currently adopted. So smaller adjustments in between can help that charge stay closer to what the updated value ought to be. So I think for tonight, we're asking for feedback on if council would implement the recommendations. If not, would the council consider phasing in to that larger charge over a multiple-year phasing period? With that, I'll stop sharing for the moment and see what type of feedback we might have.
Yeah, I think I want to talk more math. All right, Councilmember Stewart?
Okay, you know not to share math only in a presentation that you fly the slides by me. Couple of higher-level questions. So when we voted to increase the surface water rates for our residents, I don't recall talking about, and maybe I just don't recall, that we would be also increasing these rates. So if we increase these rates, can we actually reduce some of the increases that we took on our residents, since we're kind of implementing a lot there as well?
That's a really good question. At the time, when we were putting the rates together, we did not know what the updated charge would be, or if council would even adopt that full charge. So in terms of the rate study that has been adopted, we assumed the city's current stormwater SDC going forward. If the city council were to adopt this higher SDC as growth occurs, right? So it's really dependent on the ups and downs of the development cycle. By increasing that SDC from about $2,000 to $3,700, over time, the stormwater utility would receive more from the development community. And that could be used, over time, to offset some borrowing or expedite capital spending, or potentially, depending on the level of growth. Yes, it could have a relatively minor impact on the rate forecast, but it is a consideration that could be looked at.
Okay. And then if I caught correctly on the slides, the 2,085 was for 2,500 square feet of impervious surface, and then there were additional charges for some amount above that. I didn't catch all that as the slide went by. Is the 3,654 a fixed rate, or is that only for the Is the 3654 a fixed rate or is that only for the first 2,500 square feet of impervious surface?
The 3654 is a fixed rate for a single-family development. Other types of, you know, multifamily, commercial, it's more of a scaling type of schedule. So for every 3,500 impervious square feet of impervious area, you'd be charged 3654. So if you had a development for a commercial property that's, you know, 7,000 impervious square feet, you'd pay two times that single-family charge.
Okay. And would you mind putting the slides back up? You lost me on the calculation. You showed us how you came up with the number of ESUs, and then you had some assumed growth rate of .75, and you went from 24,869 up to 26 something or other, and that's where I got lost.
This one here? Oh, sorry. I thought I pressed share. Let's try this one.
I'm just trying to understand what the impact.
Is that coming through?
Yeah. So you're using an annual growth rate of .75%. So you're getting to a number that says this is, the 26,000 is where you think we're going to end up. So it's not where we are today, it's where you think we're going to end up in some point in the future?
Correct, in 2028.
In 2028.
And that aligns with the city's capital improvement plan.
Got it. And then what, where does that number go? Can you go to the next slide?
Yeah, so that's used to take your total costs, add them together, and that's divided by that 26,000 ESUs that we talked about on the previous slide.
So the future cost basis, what is that, 28 million? So the 67.1 million represents what we already collected, what we're collecting in stormwater fees from our current structures?
Yeah, so 67 million represents projects the city's already constructed historically.
Okay.
And we net out things that were paid for by grants, and then we add that interest component that we talked about under state law. And then the future cost basis of $28 million, that essentially is the capital projects that the city plans to complete over the next five to six years. And then it all gets divided by system capacity estimated in 2028.
Okay. So I'm just trying to, I feel like we're kind of double-charging somewhere because I thought that the increased stormwater rates were already trying to cover that 28 million. And now we're covering the 28 million again?
Well, the $28 million is what the city aims to complete over the next six years. A majority of that is planned to be funded by annual rate revenues set aside for capital projects. So overall, it's a relatively small component of the capital funding strategy. So at the current level of your SDCs, we're estimating about somewhere between $1 and $2 million of that 28 million would be funded by your current SDC. So it is a component in the capital funding strategy, but it's not the biggest component. The biggest component is what you've already adopted in terms of the annual rate revenue.
All right. And then what, how would this apply for affordable units under 80% AMI? Would we provide a discount or are those free? Like, how do we make sure this doesn't make affordable housing less affordable?
That's a great question. Yeah, I think that's a really great question. We might need to look into that a little bit more and come back to council with an answer. It's a great question.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Howe?
Thank you. Could you go back to the previous slide for a second? Because I wanted to make sure I understood what a non-residential customer was. Is this commercial?
It's commercial, it's multifamily, anything other than.
Okay, multifamily. That's, okay. So that's what I was trying to understand. I personally am comfortable with the rate increase for future development, and I don't want to phase it. And I want to go ahead and take the full cost now because I do think inflation plays a huge role here.
Yeah, I don't see any other hands, but if you want to, Deputy Mayor Lamb?
I just had a question regarding what the other cities are charging. If we can go back to that. Can you help me understand why, first, are other cities updating their stormwater, their development charges?
Yeah, that's a really good question. I know, you know, to answer that second question first, I know we worked on Federal Way several years ago, and that was the full charge. I know Mount Lake Terrace, we worked on a couple of years ago, and they adopted the full charge of $3,003. I know Kenmore is looking to update their GFC this year. A lot of these cities will go through similar cycles as the City of Sammamish is going through, where they'll have a new system plan, they'll update their system development charge as a result, and they may or may not touch it for several years. But to try to compare what Sammamish is doing versus the other cities, it's an interesting comparison, I think, but oftentimes, it's really apples and oranges, just in terms of you have different service areas, different mixes of residential versus commercial. You know, some of these cities that have a larger share of commercial customers can spread those costs over non-single-family customers, whereas Sammamish, if it's primarily single-family, just in terms of the general proportions, there's just fewer equivalent service units to spread that cost over. So it's really a tough comparison to know exactly why one city's higher or lower than another, but just wanted to share kind of where you are generally compared to others in the region.
Okay. I'm comfortable with taking the full amount as well. I just want to make sure that, to Councilmember Stewart's point, that we're not making affordable units unaffordable. Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, what would, because I don't think I totally followed on the multifamily. Like, what would the comparison be with the current rates for an apartment building? It's just the impervious surface, it's not per unit, correct?
Correct.
That's how you calculate? Okay. All right, yeah, I think I need to get the answer on affordable housing units and how we apply that before I'd be comfortable giving you an answer because I could see this being a, I mean, that's, it's not huge, but it's not nothing. Thanks.
Councilmember O'Farrell?
I was just thinking back to 20-odd years ago when I bought my house here in Sammamish, it was a brand-new build, and I think this was the charge that I paid. I think it came in twice yearly, and you paid it over a certain number of years. Is that that same charge? It was only on just new construction? Is that this kind of a charge that we're talking about here?
I can answer that. Councilmember O'Farrell, I believe you may be referring to our surface water management fees, which really fund, it's a majority of the revenue for the utility. And that funds both operational and capital budgets for the utility. Because we do not operate a water sewer utility, King County bills on our behalf for the utility, and so those do go out typically with their property tax statements. And you'll see it's the SWM or surface water fee on that. So this particular charge is just for development. So as development occurs, that fee is collected through the permitting process for new development or redevelopment.
So this fee is collected from the developer? It's not a utility bill?
It's a one-time fee.
Okay, I got you. And then to Councilmember Stewart's point, I'm assuming then this is maybe a fee then is passed on in the price of the home when they're selling it, this kind of adds to the cost of development? Is that kind of what we're talking about? Yeah?
Essentially, yeah.
Essentially, yeah. Okay. Okay. Yeah, I'm in favor of this charge and in favor of taking it all at once. So, yeah, I'm in kind of, I would be interested, however, in the answer to Councilmember Stewart's question. I think that's a valid point, and it's kind of something worth looking about, how any of these charges will affect affordable housing. But in general, I'm in favor of this.
All right, council, I don't see any other hands. I don't know if somebody wants to make a motion or if we want to try and wait for Audrey or if to, what was that? Sorry, I thought I heard mumbles.
I think I would just, I wasn't saying, but I think I would prefer to wait till we get the housing, the affordable housing answer before we make a motion, if that's okay.
If I may, Mayor, I think we have enough to go on. We just wanted to provide council with an update this evening of where we are and some possible options for your consideration. So we'll plan to follow up with implementing this at, with the full charge, but that will, of course, require a few more meetings. So you'll hear back from us, and next time you hear from us, we'll have an answer for the AMI question as well.
All right. Perfect. Thank you all so much.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, see you soon. All right, we are going to new business with Mike and Lacey on our council goals.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Council. My name is Mike Suggs, Supervising Management Analyst for the City Manager's Office. I'm joined to my left by Lacey Lewis, who is my counterpart, Supervising Management Analyst in the Administrative Services Department. And let's see, I'm being promoted to panelist here. Give me one second. And we are here this evening to discuss the council's objectives and 2023 work plan, which were the main topics of conversation at your January retreat. Exhibit one in your packet is the updated work plan, which includes two work plan items that weren't shown at the retreat. And those two items include the new purchasing manual, which is item G9 under the High Performing Government section, and the Community Advisory Group for the Climate Action Plan, which is now E2 under the Environment Goal Area. The updated work plan has also been combined with the objectives, so we're only looking at one document here versus the two that we were reviewing at the retreat. Those objectives were updated based on your conversations at the retreat, and we also talked with our retreat facilitator, Marilyn Beard, to ensure that they aligned with her understanding of the discussion. So tonight really provides additional opportunity for council to revisit this topic now that we've all had some time to reflect and review the updated materials. I have a copy of the work plan available to pull up on the screen here if that would be helpful. And we are planning to bring this topic back for your discussion on March 7th for potential adoption if you are ready. And before I hand it over, I also wanted to touch on a council question that came in this afternoon, asking about how we establish measurable outcomes for each objective. And this is a great question. One of our next steps following adoption on March 7th will be to define those measurable objectives and incorporate them into a public dashboard. So while many of the measurables can be defined by staff, others will need to be defined by the city council. For example, Objective 1.1 under your Environment Goal Area currently reads, "Establish and meet or exceed city goals on climate, greenhouse gas emissions, and vehicle miles traveled." The Community Development Department will be bringing the discussion on climate goals to council next month, which will establish measurements for that objective. And so once we have all of the measurables incorporated into a dashboard, we will bring them back to council at a future meeting. And tentatively, we are looking to have that dashboard ready later in the second quarter, and staff have identified a preferred software solution to track the work plan across the city and to report it out to the public through this public portal. So while the objectives do not include specific measurements within them currently, what they do is provide the policy direction needed to determine measurements and show them on that dashboard. I hope that helps answer that question a little bit. But with that said, I will go ahead and turn it over to the mayor if there's any further discussion or questions. And just a reminder that there's no action needed tonight, this is just discussion. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mike and Lacey, for taking everything, because I know that was a lot of comments and a lot of good work done on the retreat. So council, I will open it up for any questions or discussion. All right, good night, Mike. Actually, I don't see anybody. Okay, there we go. Councilmember Miranda Pore.
Wow. I get to go first. So thank you, Mike, and staff for putting this together, getting all our thoughts from the retreat in here. I think I just, first, I'll just go with some clarifications, and then maybe somebody can sort of take over. So my first one was, I think in the High Performing Government, and then I see it in other places, but in this, I wanted to see like communication and DEIB as part of that. And I know it's somewhere else, but I was just wondering, again, I think we've come back over and over again on sort of the values that we have as a city. And I don't know if we, if that still underworks. I know I saw some communication around values for the vision statement, but I would like to see something along with our goals as well. So I know we had talked about it briefly during the retreat, so would like to see something more on that if possible. Yeah.
We do have a DEIB goal area in the work plan, and I think the first item there, which talks about, it's called the DEIB program, and it's completing the city's roadmap framework for the DEIB program and implementing steps, programs, and training. I think that's really going to be getting at that internal component that we would, you know, you might see in High Performing Government, but since we have this DEIB goal area, that's where we've placed it for now. Does that make sense or would it?
So it does, but I think there are some overarching themes that encompass all our goals, right? I think it's, you know, so it feels like an umbrella over everything. And sure, you should definitely have a specific DEIB goal, but again, I think having that lens through everything, I think we've talked about this before, you know, sustainability, DEIB, making sure like communication is also, you know, overall, right? Like, you can incorporate that in each goal, but then also overall that we want to be transparent and sort of make sure that that's communicated, information is communicated across the city and through the staff. And I think when I've looked at Kirkland's, the way they do it, you know, they have their goals on the side, and on one side, they have like their value statements and the different lens with which they look through everything. So I'll send a sample of that again if you haven't looked. Again, I don't know if we can make it happen as part of this, but I think that's the theme that comes out for me. Can I continue or you want to speak?
Oh, no, go ahead.
Oh, I was looking at Scott.
I do have, oh, yeah, go ahead, Scott. I was just looking at the hand.
Thank you, if I may. Excuse me. I want to, I think it's a great question, Councilmember, and I want to sort of get us all on the same page here because the High Performing Government piece of it were things that didn't fall well into one of the other council goals but are clearly important. And so from the perspective of your council goals, kind of like the conversation we had earlier this evening about my goals, those seven goals should permeate all the organization and the decisions that we are making. So I understand what you're saying. I think from our perspective, because council has identified, for instance, DEIB as a goal, that's something we're trying to overlay over everything. And the individual components within that goal or the work plan items is just one piece of that part of it. But then, obviously, those are council goals, and therefore, they are front and center for everything that we do, if that makes sense.
Sure. Thank you. So goal number one, environment. Can you help me understand what's the difference between E5 and E9? Is E5 just the planning part? And then the E9, is that the execution?
Yeah, so E5 is the EV charging infrastructure plan, and E9 is the, item is called New EV Charging Stations at the MOC in City Hall. And so the plan is the overall plan going forward about, you know, which facilities receive charging stations, what type of charging stations, we're looking at the cost to install. It's a more forward-looking plan, whereas E9 is what we're planning to do in this work plan. We're actually going to be installing some charging stations at the MOC in City Hall. So one's physically installing them and one is planning for the future.
Okay. That helps. So under safety, I know I've asked for this around safety, you know, some data from our police department and some presentations or something like that. And I know it's hard to provide just data without context, and I know I've had conversations with the chief on that, and I understand that, but I still don't see any other communication, especially from our police department, on the safety goals. So I would really like to see something there. I would really like to see something there. And then... My other just general question was around the end dates, for example. You know, in here it says, under goal four, DEIB is supposed to be done in Q1. So are we, it's the introductory DEIB training, and that includes city council and all commissions. I didn't see it on my calendar yet, so I was like, March is approaching very quickly. So I had a question about that.
Hi, thank you for that question, Lacey Lewis. I'm definitely the person in charge of DEIB at the moment, and so would love to answer that question. So whenever we put Q1 on there, the idea there was that we have now started it. So, you know, I don't know if it's, it's always, it's going to be ongoing, right? DEIB is something that, it's never going to stop. But at least at the end of Q1, we have our committee put together and hopefully, and I'll be brief, because hopefully I'll get to give you a quarterly, you know, update or something like that. But the hope there was that we would get it going, that we are starting the framework, we're starting the committee, we're looking at trainings, we've become members of GARE, things of that sort. So that's, that was the thinking. And as you see the end there, it says ongoing. So I hope that helps.
I was talking about specifically about the DEIB training.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were talking about D1.
I mean, here it does say create a baseline understanding of DEIB's goals by delivering training to the city council and all commissions. So that's where my question was. And if it needs to be updated, that's fine. I just may want to make sure it's on our calendars. I like that, you know, this is again, very time-bound goal, so it is a smarty goal. So that's great, but I don't want us to fail right away. And if you could just look at all those dates. I think on the, on housing, goal number five, the housing action plan, I think my question was, I think it's related to just the data that we have right now. I don't see any specific item where it says, how are we going to capture the data? So I think the scenario that I'm looking for is, for example, you know, right now, if I fall in within, you know, 100% AMI and I can have a house that can afford, I can afford, but then I age, I retire, and my means get smaller, and I fall into a different AMI, am I going to be able to live in this city, right? Do I have options to live in this city? And so I don't see that kind of data collection. So, or, you know, how do we get to that, that understanding of what different levels of AMI housing do we need in the city for already folks who exist in the city, right? So I would like to see something like that there. On financial sustainability, goal six, I would like to see, for 6.1, it says, you know, promote business development in the city and encourage more public-private partnerships. I know this is forward-looking, but again, I would just like to get a clearer picture of what we mean by that, and in which areas are we focusing on. And maybe this happened when we were discussing, I just, it's just not fresh to me right now. And then, I guess I think that question is fine. Under goal seven, 7.1, for improving connectivity of people, goods, and wildlife in an efficient and effective and safe way. Again, I want a clarification on what we mean by wildlife. I think it can be critters, it could be bears, it could be something different. I just want to make sure that, you know, that we have a reasonable and grounded expectation of what that definition of wildlife is. On R8, a public work standards update, I was curious if this is something that is a very specific update, or is it updating the whole public work standard? So again, trying to get a little bit more specific. And then the R6 sidewalk program, project and implementation, do we already have public input as part of this process? So those were some of my questions that I had right now.
Thank you for those comments. We will definitely follow up on them.
Yep, thank you.
And on the long-term calendar, April 25th, says is when our DEIB training is for council special meeting. So that might be quarter, Q2, yeah. Councilmember Stewart.
Great, thank you. Again, thank you guys for pulling this together, and I love that it's all in one document now. I think that's really helpful. A couple of just high-level things. One, again, I think all of our objectives need to be smarties, right? Specific, measurable, achievable, relevant, time-bound, inclusive, equitable, and sustainable, right? They all have to have certain elements to them, because if we don't have that specific and the measurable and the time-bound, we lack a consistency. And I think that's really important. The times for some of them can be really long, and that's okay. But we need to know what that timeframe is, because otherwise, we don't know if we're making the appropriate progress or not. I feel like there needs to be a line that can be drawn. And actually, I think we should actually put it on here, that every work plan item should, we should say, what objectives does that map to? And it may map to more than one, right? And a work plan item may achieve multiple, help us achieve multiple objectives, but we should know. And part of the doing that is that, you know, everything that staff brings to us, they're great ideas, but we can't do them all. And so if we have to make some of those really difficult decisions, I think it's helpful to be able to say, this thing helps us achieve this objective. And this thing, while it's really cool, and it would be really awesome, it doesn't actually map to a specific objective. And so that can really help with that very difficult decision-making process that we all have to go through. To that end, I would love to see us have some objectives for high performing government. While I think all the things on here are great, right? I don't disagree with any of them. What is, to what end are we doing them, right? So what is that, what are those objectives that we're trying to achieve? For the very first work plan item, I'm curious why we call out that the comprehensive plan, the comp plan update is a blueprint for the future character of the city. I think it's really just for the future of the city. I don't think it's just about the character, right? It's about the function, it's about all of that. So I'm not sure why "character" is in there. So I would like to see us remove that word. For environment, for the first one I get, right, we said we were going to establish and meet or exceed the goals, and we're working to establish those. And once we have those, as you explained, Mike, we'll come back and we'll update that objective. For objective 1.2, it just says, "Begin to create and implement policies and procedures and initiatives that further environmental goals." Well, we don't have defined environmental goals. Objective 1.1 is just going to be about, you know, greenhouse gas emissions and vehicle miles traveled. What are those other environmental goals? I think we need to be able to articulate what those goals are. And as an example, right, there are a lot of projects in this section around stormwater. We should have an objective or two around stormwater, right? I think those are valid projects to have on our work plan, but they don't clearly, I can't, I can't draw that line. Like, what are these projects helping us to accomplish from an objective perspective? And I have to say, I don't really like the idea of the begin to create. It's very kind of squishy, and I'd like for us to be, like, let's just, let's just be bold, right? If we don't achieve those, that's on us, right? But, but we got to, we got to really use more action words. Same thing with ball fields. Like, again, I think we all really want to move forward with our Inglewood Ball Field Improvement Project, but what objective is that mapping to? And so I think we need to ask ourselves as a council, do we have an objective? If not, does that project belong here? Or should we add that objective? And I think we do probably have objectives around, you know, providing places for people to recreate and things like that, but we haven't called out an objective. On the trust and transparency, I would love to see us be more specific, right? Improve the accessibility of information and participation opportunities to the public. How? What does improvement look like? Increase the number of meetings, increase the, you know, the number of ways we communicate? What does that look like if we, if we did improve that? How would we know if we accomplished that objective? And we already talked a little bit about the dashboard there. I think that's it for that one. I'll go quickly. For safety, I would agree with Councilmember Ndepoire, that I think our safety objectives need to go beyond just emergency situations, right? We want our city to be safe even when there's not an emergency, so that it doesn't create one. And again, let's be specific. For objective 3.1, do we want those plans by the end of 2023? Like, what's the time bound on that? And if we're going to educate and empower the community, what, again, how do we measure if we've been successful? And I think we had objective 3.2, which was to develop a general public safety plan. Maybe, maybe we need a different objective, but something, again, that addresses something beyond just the emergency situations. For DEIB, again, I want to understand sort of what are we measuring? I love that we're going to have this framework, but how do we measure, again, how do we measure success? Are we going to see an increase in diversity in our staff on our councils and commissions? Are we going to see an increase in diversity in our programming for activities? What does that look like? Are we going to see an increase in languages that we share information in? When I look at the work plan here, and again, I appreciate you putting this all together, I noticed that while we talk about creating our DEIB program, the only group of people that we really seem to be looking at are the seniors, which is great. I think that really helps. But I think there's probably more that we need to include in our work plan around, around that. For housing, I agree with Councilmember Ndepoire on that, on her comments. Financial sustainability, I think we need an objective that says, you know, that by mid-2024, we plan to eliminate the gap between our operations spend and our operations income. Again, I think we need to be very specific there about when we're going to do something. And again, we talk about improving transparency and communication regarding the financial status of the city. What does that mean? How? By doing what? So yeah, let's define some actual measurements there. Transportation, we need to bring back objective 7.3, create a carbon-neutral mobility system, or maybe it's create a plan for a carbon-neutral mobility system. That would be fine. I think for objective 7.1, it needs to be not only efficient, effective, and safe, it needs to be environmentally sustainable, because we could probably do it really efficiently and effectively and safely, and really horribly to the environment. In terms of increase the number of environmentally friendly modes of transportation and move away from fossil fuels, way too squishy. We're going to reduce fossil fuel use by something, or we're going to create X number of things, because we could be like, hey, look, we just put up a bike rental stand, and we just did it. But that's not really, I think, where we're going. Where did our mobility master plan or transportation master plan go? It kind of disappeared. So I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Lamb?
Thanks for the opening, Mike. I just had a couple of items here. Under safety, we had talked a little bit about a police blotter during the council retreat, and you mentioned a dashboard launching Q2, so it'd be really great to have that in there. And I think I sent an email referencing Issaquah as an example to follow. So that would be great. For, under transportation, I'm not 100% clear, just like Councilmember Stewart mentioned, where the TMP went. I understand that the transportation, there is a transportation element in the comp plan, and that somehow is being worked in. And there is a transit plan, but I'm not sure how all the pieces fit together. Like, if there's some sort of diagram or something to show how these intersect, it would be really helpful for me. And this one, I'd actually like to add this onto the transportation work plan. So under the school corridor traffic analysis, that was part of the Bluma EIS direction. Under the Bluma, Bluma EIS direction, we had also talked about working on the roundabout at 202 and Sahali. I'd like to include that as our nine. Not that we actually have to, you know, I'd like to just start the conversation. I mean, we have been, in the last week, talking about improving our collaboration with our neighboring cities and state agencies. I think we should start this conversation with King County and Redmond, especially since it is a city manager goal. I, you know, like I said, just a dialogue, just a conversation, just to start working with our neighboring cities. So that's what I have. Thank you.
Councilmember O'Farrell? Thank you. I wanted to start to say that I concur with everything that's been said so far, everything that Councilmember Stewart, Councilmember Ndepoire, and Councilmember Lamb. There's just two things that I just wanted to call out, and they have already been said before. So at the, I just want to be brief, because I really liked, we had Paul Stickney give public comment tonight, and I just feel he has come to council meeting after council meeting over the years and talked about housing at great length, and has, has done great research on it. And I saw his public comment tonight. He emailed in today particularly on goal number five about housing and wanting quantifiable numbers about our internal needs. And I'm hoping that that's something we're going to glean from our housing action plan. I'm not sure if we will, but I'm hoping that is. And he made the suggestion of changing that word identifies to quantify. And I like that idea. I think it's time that we need to understand what our internal needs for housing are, and to, Councilmember Ndepoire's point earlier about when you want to downsize, where can you do that? And is Sammash a place that you can live, if you so choose, as long as you want and for all the stages of your life? And the second point that I wanted to bring up again, as already mentioned, about goal number seven about transportation, and we talked about the TMP, because it references R1, the transit plan. We do have a draft TMP from 2017, and then it kind of stopped there. So I know we do have something in a dusty corner somewhere. We did work on it in 2017. Maybe it's worth, we need to take that out. Now, I understand it's an awful lot of work, and I know we're doing a comp plan update, and maybe there's something that comes after we update our comp plan. I'm not sure what the steps and the procedures are, but that is something we definitely need. And I know we started the work, so maybe we need to kind of go find the box that it's in and take another look at it. So I think it's time to take that draft from 2017 out and take another look. And those are my comments.
Councilmember Howe?
Thank you. Great work. Really love seeing this. And just to piggyback for two seconds on Issaquah's police blotter, they do, it's really clear and very simple to understand. But you know, I started to think about that as I was trying to pull the data myself by going into the King County databases to pull the, the police reports. What it doesn't have necessarily is context. And the tricky part is, is that because we're a contract city, we contract out for police. And I'm trying to be conscious and aware of what kind of a burden it places to put context around this type of information. So it is really helpful if it can be provided, so that it's not just a car prow, you know, type of a thing. But it, I, so I'm kind of, kind of posing that out there as a question is, how do we resolve that part? A great starting point would be just the blotter, you know, that, just the statistics. And we draw our own conclusions. But perhaps, maybe there's an opportunity on a quarterly or half-yearly basis to, to draw some larger trends or larger context around it. And again, I wasn't quite clear, like, on the police side, who manages the tw-? And it, and again, I wasn't quite clear, like, on the police side, who manages the Twitter account? Because I found a Twitter account for them that was, like, dated from 2017 or something? But it was old. So for the social media accounts that the police have that relate to Sammamish, I want to make sure that there's a coordinated effort or an absolute, just, we're not doing it. You know? Because, you know, for me personally, when I, when I do marketing for an organization, I don't, you know, necessarily use every single channel that's available to man, but I'll be really explicit and clear about the ones I support and the ones I don't. And, and I don't know if this is a case of us helping the Sammamish police to help to do that, or if it's, you have to do it for them. So I'm not terribly clear on that, where that line is. The other comment I would like to make is on trust and transparency on T3. I would really love it if we could somehow add an editorial calendar into that as something specific. It does give you something that's a bit more measurable and achievable, I think. And it, it doesn't have to be extensive, but it really is helpful for us as council members, and I think to the public as well. Another point that I'd like to make is on the safety component, that first bullet, this EMP. I don't think we do that. Doesn't, doesn't, doesn't the EFER person do that for us? See, I, I'm not clear who's doing it.
Thank you, Councilmember Howe. Great question. It is a, it is a joint piece of work that we are working, we are starting on right now. It involves both the help of our regional partner and our internal staff working group. And that group is getting started right now. And we will be coming back as we go through that process.
Because it is kind of a, it's kind of like a comp plan for emergency services. It's exactly right. And so if our own staff is working on this, and to earlier points that were made about, you know, I, I look at this as a resiliency and planning for disasters and emergencies. And we just need that other piece that is, when times are tough, not an emergency, not a disaster, but like, the extreme heat events, extreme cold events, you know, things like that. I don't know that those are, because I don't know that plan. I just don't know how that's accommodated. Because what I'm looking for at the end of the day is who's responsible for what? Because right now, there are not clear lines of accountability for certain things. We can kind of drop off the face of the earth, where as long as everyone's good by 5 o'clock at night, we're good. But if someone has to spend the night somewhere, now we have a problem. So that, I would love to figure out, how do we look to the future about, how do we fix that? Those are my comments. And again, thank you again.
Councilmember Trine?
So, Mike, I don't know if you guys did this, thank you, Mayor, but on Goal 6, Financial Sustainability, F5, on the description, you put Long Range System Completion Plan. So, I mean, that could go under transportation, that could go under housing, or that could be under here. But it is, in a sense, the TMP. Or it is, or is it, if, because we don't have a TMP, this is acting transportation. Actually, I know the answer to the question already, but I'm just asking, do you have it here? What's the reason for having it in sustainability and saying not in transportation?
I think because it's more related to how do we finance the city's future transportation system? We thought it felt, fit more in financial sustainability, but you're right, it really addresses both transportation and financial sustainability. Could go either or. But it's really focused on the financial aspect of how do we pay for what we want to do?
Great, thank you. And I, on the TMP, I could have sworn that Audrey said she was coming back to us at some point to kind of go through all of the transportation plans. It's coming, I thought. Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. The team is coming on April 7th to talk about the Transit Plan, but as part of that, as we heard during the retreat, and there continues to be confusion about how all the plans stack up and what goes in what order, that I've asked the team to come in and kind of start with that piece and then move into the Transit Plan. There is a, there is a method to the madness. I think that, that we need to come in and share that out with all of you, so that it's clear. The, the TMP, just the very short version, is the TMP, the TMP actually comes after the transportation element of the comp plan is sorted out. And so we're building towards that, and all of these components sort of build their stepping stones toward getting the comp plan element piece settled out, which then leads to the transportation master plan when we get to that point. But I don't want to steal all of Doug and his team's thunder, but that's what I've asked them to do, because this is obviously a hot topic, and it is a little bit confusing, particularly as we conflate things that are comp plan related versus things that build into the comp plan, and how, what's the difference? And I think those are very fair questions. And if you all have those questions, then I'm guessing everybody else does too. So these are, these are pieces that we're trying to pull out and really come in and highlight, and it's one of the reasons that we're starting to try to do these quarterly updates on different items, because there is confusion about these around whether it's community development work around the comp plan, public works around the different pieces that they're doing. We're trying to do these to come in, to try to get at that piece a little bit more. They're not necessarily directly project-specific, but they roll across multiple projects.
All right, I don't see any other hands except, okay. You said, sorry, that you're coming back again with the quantifiable things, the numbers, and then another discussion? Or is that like a, and we'll be able to?
So we had planned to come back with a resolution to adopt the work plan and objectives on March 7th. At that time, we were not planning to include all the measurables piece. That was going to be a follow-up action. But based on the conversation here, I think we'll just go back and review all the comments and kind of figure out the best approach for that meeting on the 7th.
Perfect. All right, Council, do you have any other questions?
So, Mayor, if I may, I, I want to, just to, to help level set all of us as we go through this, one of the things that we wanted to, to get tonight in particular were, are the objectives where you want them to be? And I think that's an important piece. The work plan itself, we heard some items which, you know, you wanted some clarification on. I think one of the things we could do is come in and talk a little bit more. I, I want to be clear that the work plan that you're seeing in front of you is not all of the stuff that we are doing. And some of the things we, we chose not to put on, we're trying to hit items that are coming to you for review, direction, approval throughout the year, that doesn't obviously reflect all the day-to-day work we're doing. And some of those things sort of switch between both, or they're parts of both. So I think what we'll do in part is we'll come back. It sounds like we need to do one more bite at the apple before we're ready for adoption. So we'll come back with some answers. Maybe what we'll try to do is send out some responses via email to start with, and ask you to respond directly to Mike and Lacy, and see if we can get to a point where we can then come back and say, we think we've captured it all. Here it is. Or we need to come back for further clarification to try to move us along, because in part, you know, this is the work plan. We're already moving forward on a lot of this stuff, because we have to. But we would very much like to get to a point where council says, yes, this is, you know, we're, we are giving you the, the, this is where we want you to spend your time and effort, and, and public dollars, which is the most important piece, as has been pointed out by some of your colleagues. So I just wanted to lay that out there, because that's what we're trying to get at. This combination of your goals, your objectives, and then the work plan itself, how those relate. Just to, to one thing for Councilmember Stewart, we started off originally by putting them all within the objectives, and then decided that a lot of them could be in both, and so we pulled them back out and did it just by goal. So I think when we get to the, to the measures piece, I think that's when we're really going to pull them out and assign them to specific objectives, to your point, because I do think that's important. But I think that's getting into the, the dashboard pieces, where those would really show up. And quite frankly, as we come back to you with work items in the agenda bills, they will start to reflect this is addressing goal X, objective X, if you will. That will start to, that'll start to permeate on through, and you'll start to see those connection points.
Great, thank you, Scott, and thank you, Lacey and Mike. We'll see you in a couple weeks. Cool. All right. Lastly, we do have an executive session on the agenda. It says it will be 45 minutes? Yes, sorry, go ahead.
We do have council reports and city manager reports on the agenda.
Oh, do that before, sorry.
We do that before.
My bad. I know Councilmember Indipure, you had something, yeah.
Yes, thank you. I wanted to take this opportunity and congratulate some young women of, who are in our city. So I wanted to recognize Kaitki and Malika Kaitker. Kaitki was part of the U.S. fencing team, and their team won gold for USA. So just wanted to congratulate her. And Kaitki placed in the top 15, and her sister, Malika, placed in the top 32 at that event. Both of them have grown up in Sammamish, attended public schools, and they are really thankful for their teachers and their schools, who helped them learn to manage academic expectations and commitment towards the sport. Both of them actually now attend Cornell and are studying engineering and represent Cornell fencing team while representing USA. So very, very proud of these young women. And, and, and I can't help but say kudos to the parents and coaches who continue to be with them. So really wanted to acknowledge them today.
Yeah, thank you for sharing. That's so cool. Councilmember Stewart?
Well, what I have to share is not nearly as exciting, but I did want to report out that Deputy Mayor Lamb, Councilmember Howe, and I, as well as Scott and our lobbyists, spent a couple days down in Olympia. And we met with Representatives Callan, Springer, Ty, Ramos, Goodman, and Sen, and Senator Wellman, so I want to thank them for taking the time to meet with us. I think we got, we had a lot of great conversations, and we made a lot of traction on our council priorities, in particular, our Endeavor Elementary School Safe Roots to School and Flood Reduction Project, the Inglewood Hills Road Sidewalk Connection Project, George Davis Creek, and the Inglewood Middle School Fields. So I think those were all projects that I am optimistic will continue to move forward, and will keep in communication with our, with our representatives on those. We also, I think, had a lot of great conversations with other cities. We got to have a couple of opportunities to mingle with other city councils. We had a conversation with Mercer Island, as well as just a number of, of folks down there. So I think it was really productive. And then Councilmember Howe and I stayed on Friday and did some lobbying with Eastside Fire and Rescue, which were also some really great conversations. We had rather large contingent, so when we showed up, people listened, because there were, what, seven of us, I think? So we were a rather large crowd, but it was very effective, so.
Well, the other half was in uniform, so who's not paying attention?
Yeah, well.
Great. Anything else?
I'll just add one more piece to that, just that in every instance, we asked for money. And, and we were, I, I was very pleased to hear that different legislators were willing to sponsor us. And so that means that they actually took it on as something that they would promote forward, and that they, and we were able to get other legislators to sign on, so that that support would go forward. Now, that doesn't mean that we're going to get the money, doesn't mean we're going to get the amount we've asked for. But it does mean that if you're not there, I, I do think it makes a difference. I, our timing was really good, and it's, it's really important that you're there asking for the money and explaining and being really clear about why you want it, and what it's going to do for not just Sammamish, because they care deeply about the region. So how is this going to impact the region? How is this going to help, you know, a larger swath of people? So that was the takeaway I had.
Scott?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. If I could take a quick moment, I would like to recognize our new official permanent city attorney, Carrie Sands.
Thank you, much appreciated.
I want to say that, I want to thank Carrie and her team. They have taken very good care of us throughout our, this time period, to let us figure out what we needed as a city and how to move forward. And she was very patient with us, and she has done a lot of great work on behalf of the city. And I'm very excited to have her and her firm onboard permanently, and really looking forward to continuing to work with her and the team. So thank you.
So by permanent, you mean she can never leave?
No, I will say that permanent is in air quotes, always. But it's my pleasure to continue to help the city. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. All right. Now to executive session. Potential land acquisition pursuant to RCW 42 dot 30 dot 110 1B. Council may take action when we return. And how long for this one?
30 minutes.
30 minutes? All right, so 8:30.
The city council has extended the executive session for 10 minutes. Thank you.
We're all good? All right. Is there anything else for the good of the order? All right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move, we adjourn.
So moved? Oh, whoa, whoa, okay. We got Councilmember Stewart made the motion.
Karen seconded.
Karen Howe seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.